Welcome to tonight's study session for August 18th, 2025. Good evening and welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session for August 18th, 2025. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your participation and would like to remind everyone that our meetings follow the rules of decorum which are posted at the chamber doors. These rules apply during meetings, breaks, and transitions. We ask all attendees to remain respectful, refrain from disruptions, and avoid any threatening or intimidating behavior. No audible expressions of support or opposition are allowed, signs and placards are prohibited, and all guests must stay seated in the designated areas ensuring aisles and doorways are clear. Thank you. That brings us to council reports tonight. Councilor Zadi?
Yes, I have two asks. The first one is related to the email we got from Growing Home last week and the reports that are out there now about Adams County taking away the housing contract funding from four nonprofits, one of them being Growing Home. And as we know, they do a lot of services that we lean on them on for the unhoused. I would like, they asked, and I would like your approval for bringing them in to present to us what the impact is, what's going on, what's actually the scope, and what they want to talk to us about. But four leaders of the nonprofits would like to come in and talk to us.
After reading Jody's response, it may be a little bit premature, but could Jody put that on his list so when the dust is settled, because I don't believe it's quite settled yet, so they, because he gave a pretty good response and has a handle, our team has a handle on what is happening and where it's happening, and we have two counties it's happening in, that at a later date, when staff feels we need to relook and with the budget coming up at what's happening, to do it, to me, it's staff.
I would say no, because they, it sounds like an emergency and they really want to talk to us, and there's more to the story from what Jody had said in the email. So because of the relationship that we've had, the partnership we've had with them for a couple, a few decades now, it's probably the right thing to do to bring them in and just hear, hear them out. I don't think it has to be long, but I don't see why we would push them off to later, because I think there is a lot more to the story from what Veronica was telling me.
Well, I don't know what is signed up for the next few weeks either, so thoughts? Yep.
I have too, been speaking with folks from Growing Home, and I would be supportive of having them come in and talk to us about what their needs are. I know they just had another loss with their, their box truck and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as soon as we're able to fit it into our schedule, I would be supportive of being able to bring them in.
I think I would as well. I talked to a couple folks over the weekend that reached out, but also to your point about the agendas, I agree, but yeah, I'd like to hear from them.
I would too. My church helps them too, so it'd be good to know what their needs are.
Counselor DuBelle?
I'm fine with them coming in, but I'm kind of where you're at, Mayor, as far as I'd rather have staff drive it so that it's a holistic conversation from both sides.
Heard the conversation. Anything else?
And my second is a question. When are we going to hear back from the dog park people we requested last week? So they came in for comments last week, and I asked Jody, can we see what's going on? Because there seems to be a lot of conflicts and inconsistencies there. Do we know what they, when, when that's coming back to us?
There's an information only packet. And then packet tonight, and that's the next steps that's outlining the process that we're proposing, that we're working through with PRNL and the process of the area-specific management plan. I can have Eric speak to more specifically that timeline, but the goal is to use that in, the information they provided, which is looking at, the short-term information would be is to put up additional signage to encourage people to slow down in that area and allow us to work through the area management plan to make sure that we're doing a more comprehensive plan for the entire area. I called it wrongly, area-specific management plan.
So what Jody has said last week was it would come back in terms of the scope, right?
That's, that's in the materials tonight as far as what's proposed to be covered.
So that 1.2 million maintenance every year that it would take is concerning to me, because I, from what I'm hearing, it's, from what they said last week, it's, it's not, it doesn't seem to have the routes, the Greenway Trail piece in there. It's, and it seems to have elements that would indicate a reduction of size, because there are dog-only areas in particular parts of the, of what's going on. So there's a lot of questions that I have, mainly this 1.2 million every year that's going to take to maintain.
Welcome.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, Eric Otzelberger, Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director. For the record, the area-specific management plan will not be reducing the acreage for the dog-off-leash natural area in any capacity. And then that financial number, that is not a number that we have in the budget nor contemplated that, that maintenance amount. I, I think there were some financials being transposed between ongoing operations and maintenance and a few standalone capital items this year that were part of the decision related to the creation of Who's Dog Off-Leash Natural Area, but also in context with the Greater 4,000 Acre Open Space System with the four staff positions. So there was a little bit of apples and oranges, but, but perhaps most importantly, the scope of the project does not contemplate reducing that 440 acres.
Does it contemplate the Greenway Trail and the routes and how that's going to work?
So it, within the Who's Doona, and as we've heard from our stakeholders, mitigating user conflict will be a priority focus area, and there are a variety of strategies to do that. Within the Who's Doona, the scope of the area-specific management plan is really relegated to that 440 acres, but of course, because the Greenway Trail goes through there, that will be a significant consideration as part of the project. But just, you know, to try to set expectations, any potential reroute of the Greenway would involve multiple other stakeholders and significant costs, so that, that's just something that has to be mindful. However, whether it's gateway, trailhead improvements, dedicated trailways, or, you know, there are a variety of strategies, I think, that shoulder to shoulder with all the stakeholders in the community through this area-specific management plan, we can look at and make some, some sound recommendations to City Council on.
I guess the concern here is we've learned that Broomfield is closing off their end from the trail, and if more traffic will then be flowing into Westminster, having an area management plan should contemplate a little more directly. I think what's going to, you know, that's going to impact the quality of life of, of everyone in there, right? From what you're saying, it sounds like it's a consideration, but that's, doesn't sound like it's enough?
Counselor, I would offer, you know, related to the scope itself, and because that spine, and just, and just for, for everyone's understanding, so through a federal grant, that Greenway Trail was established, the parking lot was established at West 100th, and the federal grant funded not just the alignment through the Westminster Hills open space, but through Stanley Lake with multiple ditch crossings and what have you. Just understanding what's in our scope, a lot of this area-specific management plan scope, it's, it's bread and butter stuff. It's parking, you know, unresolved issues from last year. Last year, council made the macro decision, call it the compromise, if you will, between the 440 acres for the dog-off-leash natural area and other users, and then 600 acres for preservation. Things, nuts and bolts that weren't fully reconciled, where, where there's some, some different opinions, parking, the actual trail network itself, what, what improvements are desired, have some folks that desire some improvements, others that are concerned, hey, don't turn this into Disneyland, we don't have the money to turn it into Disneyland, but, you know, we want to respect the intent of what that area is. It is a tremendously special place, and I, with the wonderful team, you know, we've, we've had stakeholders at the table with consultant selection, and I think if, if allowed to go down the course here, the community and stakeholders will come up with some, some very good alternatives. And, you know, while a recommendation could be, you know, for future steps, looking at some sort of realignment of the Greenway Trail, that's a significant endeavor of itself outside of, of this scope, if you will.
So it's not, it's not in the scope to look at the route, from what you're saying?
Looking at all trails.
It's looking, it's, it's looking at all trails, so, but I think the way the scope's designed, it will, and, and what's more actionable in the near term would be things we could implement on short order to mitigate conflicts within that area. You know, trailheads, the trail itself, a variety of strategies. As far as longer term, and, and with our federal partners, Jefferson County partners, that's, that's a much bigger discussion, and we intend to engage them as part of this plan as stakeholders. So while I think it can be contemplated, I wouldn't, I just, I don't want to promise that, oh, there would be some resolution out of this. I think it would, it would, some recommendations might come out that could feed into the future, future efforts.
And that's fine, I, I just wanted the answer to, is it in the scope? It sounds like it's not in the scope. But the, the money, so what is the annual maintenance that go, going to be that's contemplated? If it's not the 1.2, what is the number?
Well, Counselor, I would have to give you a rough order of estimate, because we don't do specific cost accounting. There was, you know, one of the things with the Who's decision, there were four staff positions that were added this year to the open space team, and then there was roughly, let's see, three, five, six, $650,000 for one-time items, so there was some equipment, there was $150,000 set aside for trail improvements, and then the $200,000 for planning and design for what will come through this area-specific management plan. As far as, you know, weed control, vegetation, I'd have to slice and dice that out from the, the total spend, and, and we could, we could look at that, but seeing we don't do cost accounting, we don't, but I, that, that number from a former staff report or agenda memo, I, I wouldn't put too much credence in that.
Okay, and final question related to the zoning, is it still zone PUD?
It, it is, and I, Attorney Frankel and Deputy Attorney Greg Graham are better versed than I am, but with the council action to amend Westminster Municipal Code through the ordinance to create the specific designation of the dog-off-leash natural area, I believe the thought is that gave greater protection to the preservation of that area, that comp plan designation, because I believe you're correct, the, the O1 comp plan designation versus the PUD, there were fears that, oh, theoretically, there could be some housing development someday. I, I don't think that's practical, but we could, if, if there's greater comfort in examining a comp plan amendment for that area, that's, that's something that could be looked at.
So, Mr. Otzelberger, Dave Frankel, City Attorney, the comp plan designation for the land, I believe, is open space creek corridor, which is binding and mandatory comp plan compliance is required out of the municipal code. So no, there's no development going to happen there. You'd have to change the comp plan, and only City Council can change a comp plan, plus there's restrictions on the deeds on that land. So even if City Council wanted to change the comp plan, couldn't on a lot of that land. So to the extent you have O1 zoning in place, I think that's outdated, and if there was at one point a PUD before the city acquired the land, that's also outdated. Really, it's the comp plan designation that I would say is the most important, along with the deed restrictions on that land that protects it for future generations.
Cool, you know, I know we've talked about this many times, and there's still a lot of confusion in the community around that, so thanks for clarity. So it's not PUD in the comp plan, which is where it matters. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Counselor Hutt?
Counselor Camellia?
I was not able to make it, but I want to give a big shout out to Squires Park Grand Opening. I was really excited about that. I was out of town last week, but yay, and for those listening, please go check it out, it's really beautiful. And I've done a few, you know, canvassing, obviously, we've got the ballot initiative, but my campaign kickoff's from that destination, and everyone had a lot to say about the construction, so I invite you to revisit. And then I just want to give a shout out to the Denver Post article today on the downtown area, and Mayor Protem Darmella, thank you for contributing to that, but I was really excited to read that article, and I'm just really excited about all the work that council has done over the last several years for that downtown, and so I just invite folks to check that out as well. It had a lot of history and a lot of our, it also showed how, how much money is already being raked in, and so I invite folks to take a look at that, because it shows the great progress that we're all making here.
Counselor Ireland?
I attended the Chamber Lunch and LinkedIn where we learned all how to make a great LinkedIn, so I got great information. I've had classes before, but she had even more information, she was really good. There were about 20 that showed up, so that was a pretty good turnout. AgCOG's Regional Meeting I also attended. If we have any grants we're looking into, we need to get them in by October, so I want to talk to Chris about that, so I'm going to have, maybe you want a meeting with him too, about what we're trying to.
Yeah.
Get, right? And also the Federals looking at roads and stuffs too, so we might get some federal money that way. I went to the ribbon cutting of Postino, the mayor was there with me. They have had a great response in Westminster, they're just loving it up there in the orchard. I was hoping to go for my anniversary with us this weekend, but my husband's not a big cheese fan, so we went to a Mexican breakfast, because we can only eat like one meal a day because we're on this fitness challenge, so I will have to go there with a friend or something that loves cheese. We also, we went to the farmer's market for our anniversary, and we went to the concert in the orchard, which had probably 5,000 attend. And just to let you know, we only had one officer there, and they have security, but it is a big crowd, and I think maybe we need to up the security a little more there, because the world's a little crazy, and one, one officer, I don't think could handle that crowd if something happened, so we might look into having a little more police force there. I also wanted to talk a little, I know we're, we beat the dog park to death, but I've been told that if we made it a regional park, it would be cheaper to maintain, so I want that to be considered when we, you come back to us. Because I think 1.3 million a year is just crazy when we're asking the citizens for a tax increase, so I want to know what the cost is going to be if going to a regional park would be less money. That's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Demond?
I just would say if we're going to look at it being a regional park, we should talk to that neighborhood over there, because part of the big complaint of the folks that didn't like the dog park is how many people that brings in, and if you're going to make it a regional park, you're basically asking for more draw, so I would.
Well, we have to talk about parking and cost and having fees for those that are not from our city, it's more than that. I mean, Stanley Lake has, is a regional park, they have fees, and so the people that aren't from our city, we need to look at all of that.
I finished my point, I'd appreciate it. Point being, that's my neighborhood, and I can tell you that this first got raised because I was getting a lot of heat from it, from the people in the neighborhood who were concerned about how many people were over there. Additionally, when Parks and Rec originally looked at it, the usage on the park and the natural grass was because of the overuse, so that needs to be part of the conversation if you're going to look at it being a regional park. Stayed very busy campaigning this week for both myself as well as the, the fire initiative, but then fun time that I got to go down with the mayor to the Top Spin Park down off 72nd with the Mong community. I don't know if you've ever got to attend one of those events down there, a lot of fun, takes a lot of skill to do that. I've tried it once, I'm not very good at it, I don't know if the mayor, I'm sure she probably has tried it.
I had to do it at the ribbon cutting.
Did you?
And women don't do it.
They were sharing with us that there's only one female team in the world in Laos, they're, they have their eyes on the, on the female team here, so it was a good conversation with the folks down there, and always fun to go down and watch them do their sport.
Mayor Protem?
So I have a busy week coming up this week. The, we have Dr. Cog late Wednesday, and then I have Front Range Passenger Wheel on Friday, and then the Red Lotus Den opening this Thursday, did I skip that right? Yes, so that's exciting. I did have a question about the, the dog park, it's just so much easier to say that than all the other acronyms. Mr. Otzelberger? So to the point that Counselor Demond just made regarding the, the neighborhoods, I was wondering, the steering committee itself, what's the composition going to be looking like? I know there were some comments in the last round when we were looking at the dog park in general and what it would become, that maybe the neighborhoods didn't feel like they had enough representation?
So Mayor Protem, we have engaged with the neighborhood, and they are one of the stakeholders in the scope, and Attachment C or Attachment Three in the packet has, has a basic visual of just what the community engagement process looks like, and presuming we get the green, green light to proceed here, we will, the, the team will embark on a listening tour with key stakeholders, the neighborhood being one of them. What's contemplated with the, you know, we'll be doing the shoulder to shoulder, each stakeholder, we have key stakeholders and stakeholders, there'll be a steering committee comprised of 15 individuals, so it's contemplated that, you know, a couple individuals per key stakeholder group, if you will.
Okay, so that would comprise the planning committee?
So there'll be direct engagement, what, what's contemplated, there would be a listening session with the neighborhood, we have a, a couple individuals that have been advocates and kind of leads for the neighborhood, so we would work, the team would work with them to set that logistic up and do that listening session and get whoever wants to attend, get that input, and then it would be contemplated that the neighborhood would likely be able to nominate one or two, you know, potentially three individuals to sit on that planning steering committee that will ultimately steer the recommendations.
That's what I was wondering, because I knew there were all these different elements that you had, but I was, the planning committee seems like it would be a little more engaged throughout the process.
Correct.
Okay, that was the only question I had on that.
Before I forget, the budget will be sent out electronically Friday. If anybody wants a printed copy, you need to let Deputy Opie know that tonight. I asked for one because I'm leaving, and it's easier to read on a plane than.
I'd like one too.
On the computer.
I'll have one too.
Me too, please. I heard Christine, hot, Mayor Protem and me. Anybody else? Oh, hot. Counselor Zadi? So I have five copies. Okay. Yeah, last week was a crazy week. Youth Advisory Panel started, what a great group. They had their elections for office, and they just started out with Lily asking, she's the staff representative, and she said, okay, who wants to run for chair? And they just, one by one, they, we had several get up, give impromptu speeches, and then they had a vote, and then they next went to the vice chair, and then the secretary and the PIO, and we have great people coming up to take our jobs. They are, they were great. So they're, they're at their beginning. at their beginning parts of looking at what they want to do this year. And they will have their retreat September 6. And I know some of us are going to their luncheon to answer questions and let them spend the rest of the day planning. But great, 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 great group of people. Saw the first advisory panel at the MONG event on Saturday, helping them with face painting. And they dunked the mayor. And that was a little chilly. But it's just good to see those students out and about and having a great time. Postino's was absolutely wonderful. What food. Oh, my gosh. And they came within $3,000 of beating the all time grand opening record in the area. So they, they pushed and the, the woman that is running that one is just a neat, neat, neat person. And they're so grateful to be in Westminster. Squires Park, what fun watching the zip line. And there were adults that wanted to try it, but didn't want to push any kids away. And it just was so fun. And it's laid out so terrific. And so when Jody and I were ready to, they said for us to cut the ribbon, I said, no, this isn't our park. I saw, I got on the microphone and asked any kids in the area wanted to come up. So we had a whole handful. The problem was we have the scissors and I needed their hands down here so that, and through that hole so that their hand wasn't up here. When the scissor hit, I didn't need to be reported for abuse and having fingers crushed and everything. So that took longer to pry little fingers and get them in the right place. And then we did a great ribbon cutting and they were having such a great time. I have no idea how long they went, but I had another event to race to. So just Eric, your team, everybody clapping for them, but they should all have crowns. They, fantastic, fantastic, fantastic. They just, I can't say enough about it. The color is beautiful. I know over on the left hand side, they were quickly finishing up the dog park. And we had little ones with animals that waited until it was already going. Then they tested out dog park. It's wonderful.
I appreciate that praise and just want to give a little statement of gratitude to Adrian Newton, who's our landscape architect on that project. When it comes to project management and what she did, she inherited some very significant challenges.
She shared, yeah.
And her problem solving saved the city a tremendous amount of money. And, and it sounds like delivered an excellent park that you can all be proud of. And this is the most substantial park renovation the city's done in a decade and a half. So-
She shared that with me, the different things. And I had shared, well, when I first saw the, I call them the DIA tents. And I just thought, they do know that microbursts come through there and everything. And she said, when she saw the first plans, she says the same thing I did. And she said, these will withstand 180 mile an hour winds. And so she just started going down. All the things she had to, she was inheriting and she had to go through and change and fix and, and make sure it was good. So wonderful job. Just fantastic.
Yeah. Her attention to detail, impeccable. They meet wind load. They're good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
MONG event Saturday, it was just, the MONG are more and more, you know, they had their first gala this year. They're just really, from where they were back when I was mayor in 2003, and we had their first, we had MONG in the area, about 5,000, and they didn't speak to one another. We ended up knowing there were nine clans. And anyway, they are now, it's just, they have grown so much because they keep asking and they learn. And so they had a family event Saturday down at the Top Spin Courts. And because next year is the 250th anniversary for America and 150 for Colorado. Yang Li says, we don't have women that play this. And it's time to get lessons for them. And so she was wondering if Parks and Rec would help with how you do all that. They're willing to teach. And they even taught a lefty to do ribbon cutting way so long ago. And everybody has their, some wind 18 times, some do 15. So it's all their own art and they use ends of golf clubs. So if our golf courses have people that hit their club and ruins it, but if we had a little recycling bin, they would use them for their handles. We gave away my mom's probably 1970 golf clubs to them because we were going to get rid of them. And I said, no, we got to call the MONG and see if they want them. And they came right and picked them up at the house and are being used. So they're just so excited and they want to be part. And, you know, our team has won, our MONG Top Spin team has won Nationals. And so they would like to bring that national championship here next year. They have some ideas about it, but again, just need some loving how to do it. They're willing to do it. They just need some, some, some words. So I could be, and then their egg rolls, you know, are so delicious. They have great food. Snoozy bet for cancer pre-screening was held Saturday night. Mr. Mack and I bought our tickets and never, well, last year was the first one I ever had to miss because of my illness at the time. I, I just, I tried until five o'clock and finally called and said, I, I can't even drive there or get there in a car to let alone get out of the car and walk in. So missed it. But this year, great. And I love, they had human roulette, no, human slot machine. And I've never seen it. So the three people sitting behind the box and there's little openings, they go like this with the rolling. And then they have things down here. And so the first time they have to pick up and they can't see each other. So everybody had ducks. So the little girl won two tickets for some drawing. So then they, again, I can't remember what they picked up this time, maybe a fire truck or something. And then I think the third time we had two had one thing and one had another. It was just hysterical. So it's always a good time. But for a very real thing that they have to deal with, because that's the number one cause of death in our firefighters. So Sea Fire does that. That's the people that go through the Fire Academy, Citizens Fire Academy, and they run all of that. So just kudos to all of them. I went to the, my treatment center, Sarah Cannon, today, signed my life away. I am now enrolled in my new treatment. I will not be here next week, but I will be here via Zoom. I am going with our entire family to visit our daughter. And doctor said sometimes family and a little time away does more than any kind of chemo that he could give me. So it's with his blessing. We come back and September 2, I go in for my CAT scan and my MRI. Wednesday, I have to do this time in this treatment, I have to do, I, I appointment every so often to make sure everything's okay. And then on Friday, the 5th will be my first treatment. I have to stay there six hours because first time, they always keep you to see how you do and make sure you're okay. So that's my, my thing when I come back from vacation and, but I will be here. But I told Mayor Protem, I can't see anybody when I'm online. So she'll run the meeting, but I will be there. I would not miss that meeting with the, the ballot language going, being voted on that night. I would not do that to our firefighters. So I will be there and you'll be starting at 8:30 my time, but I'll be there. So that's next week.
And do you have anything tonight to give?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. Just a brief overview. If we pull up those slides. So first item on our updates is that the city is, we're pleased to report that Westminster was awarded Adams County Open Space Grants this past week for the following three projects. Bishop Square Park was awarded $1.5 million, adding accessible paths, redesigned playground and stormwater controls, and providing for a lighted recreation space. It's in the lower left image of on the screen. And this is the concept plan that is currently envisioned. It is scheduled to be bid out this fall and with the start date targeted for early 2026. The second item that we received funding for was Municipal Court Park, $1.4 million to create a new park with walking paths, shade trees, seating, and zirks landscaping. The municipal court community advisory team helped select the colors and the play elements. Installation is tentatively scheduled for mid 2027. And then lastly, Westminster Parks and Open Space Team was awarded $20,000, $20,845 for equipment electrification. This grant assisted with the replacement of gas powered park maintenance tools with battery powered alternatives such as electric trimmers, blade blowers, edgers, and chargers. It allows the entire team to be compliant with the state law that works to convert from combustion engine equipment under 10 horsepowers to electric equipment during the summer months. So we really appreciate that Adams County support, financial support for these important projects.
Next slide.
Citizen Police Academy begins this week. The Westminster Police Department Citizen Police Academy begins on Wednesday. It's a great way for residents to gain insight into law enforcement and build mutual trust and respect with the Westminster Police Department. The Citizens Academy offers direct contact with police instructors through lectures, hands-on experience, and demonstrations. It'll run for 12 weeks and we have 30 participants. We actually hit capacity right, right away. And very excited about that. Next session will be next fall. Next slide. Also, community update tomorrow night with Mayor McNally and City Manager Andrews. We hope that folks will join us for that monthly update, starting at 5:30 to 6:30 here in the city council chambers. Receive a public safety update from Police Chief Norm Hubbard and hear how the city is addressing quality of life issues. The event will also be livestreamed and recorded on the city's YouTube channel and Facebook. Next slide. Tonight's agenda is a study session. We have three items, information items, the first one being the 2026 City Council proposed sponsorships. Second item, the Human Services Board 2026 Grant Award Recommendations. And lastly, the Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Off Leash Natural Area Specific Management Plan update, as we've discussed a little bit already. There are four presentations tonight, the Butterfly Pavilion Operations and Goals Update, Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment, two concept review plans, concept plan reviews, one for Kaiser North, the replacement of the medical office building, and the second one for the addition of land use for Dogtopia within the Brent Cross Shops subdivision. Lastly, the Westminster Economic Development Authority is seeking an executive session for direction from the WEDA board members regarding the proposed development agreement and to discuss the possible sale of WEDA owned property located at Block D5 in downtown Westminster. Next slide. This week, as noted, tomorrow night is a community update with Mayor McNally and City Manager Andrews. On Wednesday, the Special Permit and License Board is having a meeting from 6 to 8 p.m. here in the city council chambers. On Friday, August 22, part of the summer activation series in downtown Westminster, there'll be live music, summer sounds with the Tiero Band with Bridget Law in Central Square, starting from 6 to 8:30. And then on Sunday, August 24, we'll have also yoga on the plaza in downtown Westminster, 9 to 10 a.m. Next slide. Next week's meeting for August 25 is a regular city council meeting, starting at 6:30. Two information items, the proposed 2026 budget item, as well as a communication plan and information regarding potential modifications to the roadway improvement fee. Presentation on the Government Finance Officers Association Triple Crown Award. Four items on consent. And then three items in new business, the first reading of Council Bill 26 amending the municipal code to prohibit the sale, retail sale and possession of dogs and cats, cats and dogs, excuse me. First reading of Council Bill 27 approving a proposed development agreement with Prime West Development LLC for Block C5 in downtown Westminster. And first reading of Council Bill 28 regarding a proposed economic development agreement involving the redevelopment of 3053 West 104th Avenue. Also, for next week, under old business will be second reading of Council Bill 24 regarding supplemental appropriation to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for the Westminster Station RAP repurchase. And under the Westminster Economic Development Authority, under new business, Resolution 243 approving a proposed development agreement and purchase and sale agreement with Westminster Economic Development Authority owned property located up block C5 in downtown Westminster to Prime West Development LLC. And then a post-city council study session, an executive session for the discussion of personnel matter, the annual review of, for the presiding judge. Next slide. As always, you can contact us through Access Westminster, the main phone line, 303-658-2400, our website, and always on social media, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
I have a question. When are we getting the signage back to us for the park?
For the Westminster, the authority?
The modified signage. When is that discussion coming back?
I will, I will get that back for you. I don't think we have it agendized yet.
First up tonight is Butterfly Pavilion Operations and Goals Update.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Community Services Director Lindsay Kimble to do the introduction here.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilors. Lindsay Kimble, Community Services Director. I am so pleased to have with us tonight, a brand new CEO of the Butterfly Pavilion, Ryan Welch, and Chair of the Board, Mark Corbett, here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to them right away, but I just want to share with you, and I, on behalf of my team, we have had just a tremendous experience working with Ryan. And I know Alex is here as well and Mark on this new partnership and going forward, moving forward with Butterfly Pavilion. And it's just been really wonderful to work with them. They've been fantastic. So with that short introduction, I will turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and city leadership. Thank you for the opportunity to share how Butterfly Pavilion sees the vision for the future and how that involves Westminster. Butterfly Pavilion was established in 1995, so we're celebrating our 30th anniversary right here in Westminster. It is the first association of zoos and aquariums accredited standalone nonprofit zoo in the world. So for 30 years, Westminster has been our home and our intent is to stay right here and continue investing in this community for decades to come. We are more than an attraction, though. We are a cultural anchor, inspiring and educating thousands of children and families right here in the community about the importance of invertebrates, which make up 97% of all animals on earth. We are also a global leader in invertebrate research, conservation, and education. Next slide. I'd like to just tell you a little bit more about myself and let Mark introduce himself. As Lindsay said, my name's Ryan Welch. I'm the president and CEO of Butterfly Pavilion. And I've got about 20 years of leadership experience in nonprofits. Probably the most significant achievement that I bring to this project is the leadership of a $34 million capital campaign when I was with Rocky Mountain PBS, Channel 6, for the new media center in downtown Denver. And I had the honor of leading that and to, to completion. And so I'm very excited to be here today with you all, sharing my vision for the future of Butterfly Pavilion, which I think is very bright. And we're excited about partnering with the city of Westminster to bring that vision to a reality. And I'll let Mark introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Mark Corbett. Thank you for your time and your support this evening. My background, I was the chief investment officer for the Great Westlife Group of Companies. You would know the US arm as Empower, Empower Stadium, number two behind Fidelity. So very large organization. I oversaw the US, UK, Canada, Europe, and Irish investment strategies and policies and risk management. I was involved with the Butterfly Pavilion a few years ago on a couple of their committees and started studying their plans for expansion and their site, et cetera. So I worked hard with the board to redirect them in terms of the strategic direction they were taking. I encouraged them to come back to Westminster and focus on the existing site. Some of the reasons I did that, the core operations are here. Moving those core operations was extremely risky. They hadn't evaluated it properly. The site is a wonderful site. Real estate is all about location, location, location. This site is perfect for the Butterfly Pavilion. It has tremendous visibility from the highway. We link in with all of your parks. There's retail, there's infrastructure, there's hotels, there's parking. So from a pragmatic standpoint, it made no sense other than to stay here. We can focus on expansion without disrupting the existing operations, which is critical. So the revenue streams, et cetera, stay intact. So anything we do is a very low risk proposition. And we worked hard with the board and- So anything we do is a very low-risk proposition, and we worked hard with the board and the management team to redirect, and I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with you folks. I think it's a wonderful location. We have the board in full support and the management team as well. Everyone's excited about this opportunity set, so we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody, your comments? Counselor Ireland?
What kind of expansion are you thinking about?
The land to the north of the Butterfly Pavilion would be ideal, and it links in with your parks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what we've been talking about is having an iconic building that you can see from the highway, which will attract visitors, et cetera, from the Boulder corridor, and focusing on revenue-generating opportunities with the expansion. So we'd be focused on new exhibits and a broader way of attraction so that we can keep people in the building for a full day as opposed to a few hours. But the northern expansion solves all the parking issues that they're having as well.
Okay, great. Counselor, if we could, we need to have a full presentation. I apologize. If we could let them go through the presentation.
Oh, sorry, I jumped the gun.
I'm so excited for you guys staying here. I just, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And so we really believe that every visit to the Butterfly Pavilion is a chance to create a lasting impression and memories, whether it's a child's first butterfly landing on their hand or a family exploring our tropical rainforest together. We engage our community with transformative experiences that inspire curiosity and foster a deep appreciation for invertebrates. Our guests have the rare opportunity to get up close with these incredible creatures, building personal connections that spark lifelong interest in conservation. And I've been with the Butterfly Pavilion three months now in my new tenure, and I can attest to the special experiences that this organization provides to each and every person who comes through here. It's life-changing to see a small child get up close and actually have the perspective about, you know, handling a tarantula or a butterfly landing on them and walk away with a new appreciation for the value of invertebrates, no longer squashing bugs, but making sure and having that value that they are an important part of our ecosystem. Next slide. So we really do believe that our home is right here. You know, our location in this iconic, heavily-trafficked corridor gives Westminster unmatched visibility as a science, education, and tourism destination. As Mark mentioned, we want to remodel our current existing facility and potentially expand. This is a prime opportunity for us to continue to connect nature, recreation, and community in one seamless experience. Next slide. So what you're seeing here is a conceptual rendering. We want to build something that's iconic, something that's prominent, again, that establishes Westminster as a leader in this conservation space for invertebrates, a place that makes Westminster on the global map of a world-class facility that welcomes people in. These renderings, again, are conceptual and for just the vision-setting purposes of our conversation today, but it represents our commitment to building something iconic in this community right here. Another big piece of the vision is around open space and how we bring the inside out and the outside in. We envision outdoor spaces that are fully connected to the surrounding parks, trails, and neighborhoods. We are especially adept at pollinator corridors, outdoor classrooms, and gathering spaces that will bring learning into nature year-round for our participants. These areas will invite the community to engage with conservation in a hands-on, memorable way. So this is a new home for our education, conservation, and research, and we've been growing fast. We are busting at the seams. If you've happened to stop by on a summer, busy summer day, you can see it. We need more space, and we are committed to building that space to invite the community in. We want to be a, continue to be, a top cultural attraction. Every year, we're ranked as top 10 in cultural attractions in the metro area, drawing more than 350,000 visitors annually, contributing to Westminster's economy, and we believe that this expansion will only increase that number. But our growth requires more space for exhibits, as Mark mentioned, research labs, and community programs. And by expanding, we strengthen partnerships with organizations like CSU and others, driving innovation in conservation right here. This expansion also strengthens the city's reputation as a hub for science, education, and family-friendly tourism. At Butterfly Pavilion, we transform the way people think about invertebrates through our transformative and engaging exhibits, but also through our educational programs. We firmly believe that transformational experiences are necessary to inspire audiences to become stewards of these small but mighty hidden heroes of the natural world. So we're proud to be both an economic engine and an educational resource for Westminster residents of all ages, and we really do see that. Yes, our primary audience is young families, but we get people of all ages who come to enjoy what Butterfly Pavilion has to offer. And what you can see on the screen is just a highlight of some of the programs that we offer, and you can see it's everything from youth development to adult programs. So as far as our existing building, we want to do some minor upgrades there. We'll be continuing to use our existing facility for offices, classrooms, and community space, keeping operations seamless. Renovations, though, will allow us to expand the research and education without disrupting the guest experiences. And so this phased or dual-building approach maximizes both community benefit and operational facility. And one of the things we have to really think about is the viability of us being able to do this not only sort of in the current space, but can we do it while, can we keep things going while we are operating our current facilities? And we are very confident that we can. Next page. So when we think about the new building concept and what we're envisioning, it's about 30,000 to 40,000 square-foot new building, and this would be an additional space that we would envision for our exhibits. And so it really just, our expansion ensures we can grow sustainably, balancing our mission-driven work with strong revenue streams. We envision a tropical biome, a desert ecosystem, and rotating exhibits that will keep guests returning and spending locally. Event spaces and retail will provide year-round economic benefit to Westminster businesses. And so we are proud to call Westminster home and deeply value our partnership with the city. For 30 years, we've grown together, inspired countless visitors, and made lasting impact. Now we have the opportunity to take that to the next level, creating a place that will inspire wonder, spark learning, and connect people to nature for generations. We couldn't be more excited for what the future holds, and we look forward to building it together with all of you. Any questions?
Sorry to jump ahead.
No, that's great.
I'm so excited that you're staying. I could do cartwheels. Counselor Isid, anything?
Well, thank you for being here. Exciting project.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Counselor Camille?
Honestly, I'm ecstatic. Thank you so much. It's no secret that it's a decision for you to stay, and now that I know who to thank, I will write a card to you. Thank you. Thank you. It is all I've been talking about. I've been telling every resident that I come across that, hey, by the way, Butterfly Pavilion is staying. This is huge news, and we need to really level up our partnership with them. We owe that to you. The fact that you are a world-renowned global research center right here in our city, I just don't think is celebrated enough, and I'm so excited that you're here, and I'm excited that you're here in our study session so that we get to learn more about what it is that you're doing already, and then we get to explore opportunities for, you know, better partnerships to level up. So I love that, and it also plays into my conversation that I've been having about, there was a line in there, I saw it, about how we can demonstrate how urban planning can play into helping invertebrates and pollinators, and I've been talking nonstop about that as well. I've been attending the Monarch Series, you know, webinars for the last six months, and thank you for all the education that you're doing for the community. So I'm saying that out loud. There's a free Monarch Series webinar you can attend, and you can learn about how vital our pollinators are for our food ecosystem, and the fact that they're on the edge of ecological collapse is, it's a very serious matter. And I'm frequently told, you know, there's only so much you can do on council, and I just want to say, I disagree. I think that when we work in collaboration with our public-private partnerships and with a zoo that's already here and with our neighboring cities, and if we plan wisely, there's a lot that we can do with our planning and to help our invertebrates. And we could even partner better with Mexico, who's always right here, right at your center, right? The Mexican consulate is right there. And so I just want to say that because we've been having, the last two years, we've been having, the Environmental Advisory Board has been meeting quarterly and a summit, and that means we've been having our environmental advisory board now meets with Longmont, Boulder, Erie, Lafayette, Louisville, and I'm just saying that out loud because we've been doing this work, and now we're so well-positioned to leverage everything that you're saying and bringing, even on a larger scale with them. So I'm so excited, and I think there's so much potential here.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. And I just may make a quick, another comment, and how grateful we are for the past relationship and work that we've done with the city of Westminster. There's a number of projects, but especially our Urban Prairies project that we've had with you all, and it's been very, I think, collaborative and really wonderful, and we want to continue that relationship moving forward.
I would add, we would like to rebrand the Butterfly Pavilion as a invertebrate zoo so that we can garner national attention and do more work around highlighting the research that's coming out of this organization. So you will see some changes as far as branding, but it's really to reflect better what happens inside the doors of the Butterfly Pavilion.
A hundred percent, and that's great news, and I had a feeling that was coming because that's what I've been highlighting, is so many folks don't know, our own residents don't know what you do.
It's much more than a butterfly.
That's exactly.
More than butterflies.
A hundred percent, and that's what I keep saying. It is a global research center for invertebrates, and we have the best and brightest working here, and we need to help amplify all the work that you're doing.
Counselor Ireland? Thank you. So you draw any inspiration from other projects that draw people in to this?
Have we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, one of the things that we've, I mean, we are unique, and there's not a lot of invertebrate zoos, but there are some very wonderful butterfly houses all over the world, actually. Toronto has a world-class butterfly house. Key West has a world-class butterfly house, and so we've partnered with or talked to those folks, and we have explored some of the invertebrate zoos. The Insectarium in New Orleans is another facility that has just gone through a significant capital campaign and remodel, and so we've been looking around to really find out, you know, who's the biggest and best in this space and what can we learn from them and bring them, bring them to this project.
I say that because I grew up in Omaha, which has amazing biosphere and the desert thing, so I was wondering if you'd ever looked at that.
I actually have a conversation with the Chief Experience Officer from the, is it the Henry?
Dorley Zoo.
Dorley Zoo, yeah. Next week, so I'm.
Great.
I am, yeah.
All right. Counselor Dema?
Thank you for being here. It's exciting to meet you in person. I know I've been on board meetings virtually with you. I think it would be a disservice to not, we went through some rough times with you as an organization, and to me, it's a testament of the damage that people who sit in our seats can do when they don't value partnerships. I know when I came on council, actually, nobody on council wanted to take the liaison position because of the relationship, and I really saw the value in it because, quite frankly, that was a big ask that they were trying to go after. But more than that, one of my first things in the space and in the community was with the Ridgeway situation, and the Butterfly Pavilion really stepped up for the WIT Elementary Community, which is no longer a school, but it was my kid's school at the time, so that was my first exposure to the Butterfly Pavilion. So the work that you guys do outside of the zoo, like we've heard, is, I mean, it's a big deal. So one of the things that I've always been, and I know that I've said this in board meetings before, I've been very dedicated, as well as some of our city leadership, especially Jody Andrews before he was Deputy Manager. He always believed that we should keep the partnership alive with you, as did I, knowing that there could potentially be a different path for you. And I think that the community needs to understand that there was leadership in the city that really was dedicated to seeing you guys stay and flourish here in Westminster where you started. So I know that, I look around the table, and at this point, there's probably just half the table, and one side, probably Dave Frankel, who were around for a lot of those conversations. So the organization has changed a great deal in the time that I've been on the board, but I'm very, very excited about the work that we have been doing in the eight years I've been there, as well as the new stuff that you guys are bringing to this current board. I think it's pretty exciting stuff that is ahead of the organization.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Ten?
I'm personally thrilled. I actually was on staff back when we were trying to convince the Butterfly Pavilion to stay here. I worked with an architect to build out what the vision might be. We were looking at the site across the street, and I really was invested in seeing you stay here, so I'm so glad that we found, you know, the fact that, what we were arguing years and years ago was true, that your home is here, and I just, I also value, I'm an urban planner, so I love what you are doing with other communities, and it goes well beyond Westminster, and I love being able to see, you know, the potential for the impact that the Butterfly Pavilion slash invertebrate zoo can have. And I actually appreciate the fact that you also diversify the experiences. You're bringing more people in and creating educational opportunities. I know several kids who were actually interning in high school at the Butterfly Pavilion, so it's just a great opportunity to build a network of people and maybe some careers in the community. So, yeah, thank you for staying here, and I'm looking forward to figuring out how to support. One thing I would say is, it's been 30 years, but Westminster was integral in getting the Butterfly Pavilion off the ground. We actually partnered with, was it Patrick at the beginning? It wasn't Patrick at the beginning.
No, it was.
I'm forgetting.
That great big guy.
The vision.
Looked like a football player.
But we actually put the land in to make this possible, and I don't think it would have gotten off the ground without Westminster here, and I just am glad to see that we're able to continue the partnership.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled, and I'm your backdoor neighbor to the north. I could walk every day to your place, walk around and see the front of it because the pugs always want to go around the lake and visit the ducks and the geese at the promenade. But I can't explain the feelings I felt when I knew you were looking at moving, and I knew we had worked so hard for this partnership, and I wasn't on council, I just ached. Fast forward, was re-elected to mayor in '21 and worked with the Broomfield mayor, and I knew it was going there, but when things started to look like they might not, I am very good friends with her. She, we could talk about anything and everything, and so when I was told by the past person as interim city man, or CEO, that they weren't going, my first statement was, "And Mira Gastroida knows, right?" And she said, "Well, no, I haven't talked to her." And I said, "You have to, I cannot know something she does not know. That is how we work together." And I said, "I don't want her hearing it from anybody but you, and now that I know it, I need you to go and call her now." So she promised me she would, and Mayor Guileen said she did get that call. We've had a hug and some tears, and both of us are, she's excited for us, she knows it's the best decision. I'm just so grateful to keep you. And she did say, "Remember, we're not that far away, so we could still support them." So I'm just glad to have that relationship with Broomfield that it meant a lot to me that we could keep that positive relationship and working together, because we do on every other realm, and so this one felt a little bit icky at times because I might know something and she might know something, and we couldn't talk about it. So the day that we could was just a good day, and we both felt the same way and had a great hug. So I just, thank you for staying. Thank you for your vision. I agree. I can't wait to see what happens, and I know from being on Mile High Flood Control District with all of the dirt you see there, and they're talking about putting in the gardens for the pollinators and stuff, that they've been talking to you. Counselor Ireland and I were at the retreat where they were dedicating some artwork, but you had helped with the big circular garden, and so you're everywhere, you're talking to everybody, you're such a great asset, so I have not enough words to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I too served on your Butterfly Pavilion Board until I was elected in 2001.
Thank you.
Well, if nothing other than that, staff will continue to work with Butterfly Pavilion. We're excited to work with you in this new partnership and see where we get.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And thank you for the goodie bag.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Denver Regional Council of Governments Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Next, we have Denver Regional Counselor of Governments, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Potem. That's a tough act to follow. Congratulations. We're all happy that they're staying, so that's great. I have the honor to formally introduce Vivian Viddy Del Piso. She is our new housing administrator for the City of Westminster, working in the economic development, new position. She's been here about six months. I stole her from Broomfield.
Wrong time.
She's been a great hire, she's been a quick study, and she was a good steal, I'm not going to lie. And she's really here to help us address affordable housing policy and development, and she really adds a lot of bandwidth to our team and to help address a lot of the strategic objectives that you guys, US Council, have set forth in the strategic plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Viddy. Oh, wait, no, one more thing. We've also heard last, when we presented an information-only memo on the Fourth, and heard your concerns about having some local control over the regional housing needs assessment. So this meeting is really just to go over high highlights and then really capture your feedback and direction. So with that, Viddy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. Thank you, Stephanie, for that so sweet. Guileen knows I'm here, so. I talked to her before. We hugged.
Well, I know what you've done in Broomfield, so that's exciting to know.
Good, thank you, thank you. So I'm here today to talk about Dr. Cog's Regional Housing Needs Assessment. The Regional Housing Needs Assessment allows Westminster to comply with the statutory required housing needs that every jurisdiction should be doing by December 2026, while maintaining our flexibility and our local control. It's not because we are part of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that we can't keep updating our local one and still doing all of our assessments ourselves. In order to participate, that's the reason I'm here this evening, is to bring to the governing body the Housing Needs Assessment to see if you have any comments to submit back to Dr. Cog. This was initiated by the Board of Directors of Dr. Cog in 2023 in response to the region's housing challenges. When we talk about housing, it's really important that we look at the entire region and not only our own jurisdiction. It provides shared data-driven foundation to understand how much the needs are in our region. It also provides some scale and scope of the housing needs. As you can see demonstrated in this slide, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment tells us that between 2023 and 2032, there will be a need for new 223,000 new homes in the entire region. So then, who's part of this region? Because it's a high number. As you can see here, those are all the jurisdictions that are part of the region and Dr. Cog. Some of them overlap, like Westminster, you know, a little bit north, north central, but you can see that it does include a lot of local jurisdictions. The need for a regional coordination, it's because there is a lot of cross-jurisdictional boundaries, right? There are families that might be looking into jobs and affordable housing and schools, but they also want our neighbors for the amenities and the childcare. So there's a lot of boundaries that are crossed when we talk about our regional needs. This slide here comes directly from the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Their expectation is in the next 10 years, Westminster would have to add 7,300 housing units to meet the demand of our city. You can see those colors are separated by area medium income, so the higher need on the lower area medium income and the higher as well. I just want to point out that staff also heard concerns from council, is it even possible to build this many units? So we are conducting a housing study to evaluate the amount that we can actually build in the city according to the current comp plan that we have. We're also partnering with the planning team on this endeavor, so we'll bring back more updates. This slide is also from the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It talks about housing burden. As you can see, in the last 22 years, almost half of the population currently in Westminster is housing burden. And what does that mean? Somebody that is housing burden is someone that spends more than 30% of their income in housing costs. Somebody that is extremely housing burden is someone that spends more than 50% of their income in housing costs. That means that if they have an emergency with their car repairs or a medical emergency, it becomes harder to cover those bills and also pay for their rent or their mortgage. Other key findings from the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, that, you know, despite a lot of building booms that we've seen in the region, it still hasn't been able to keep up the pace with the population and the job growth that we've seen, that low-income households, which are the ones below 50% of that area medium income, represent the greatest need for additional housing. The aging population and smaller household trends will require more diverse housing types, and housing types and affordability are unevenly distributed across the region. So we are here this evening seeking direction from council, first to see if council does wish us to participate in this Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which requires us to just talk about it tonight with you. You had the opportunity to review the materials that were given at the Info Only, and I'm here to collect any comments that you might have on it. And if council does decide that we proceed with it, I'll pass on these comments to Dr. Cog, and we'll fulfill our statutory mandate for the Housing Needs Assessment. Thank you.
Mayor Potem?
So I had one question from the community on this regarding the Housing Needs Assessment content and data. Is there, well, maybe the comment is, it would be helpful to have an accounting of the age and condition of existing affordable housing stock so that we can understand how much of that is actually at risk of, or just not occupiable? As you are aware, we have some housing stock that I would call maybe the part of our naturally occurring affordable housing that is not in good condition. And so that does impact our quality of life and people's access to inability to live and stay in that housing. So that consideration, I don't think is part of that larger picture that the Regional Housing Needs Assessment is looking at. And I also, just kind of picking up off of that, that being able to establish what is our natural, naturally occurring stock and how does that contribute as part of our total affordable housing in the community? And how much of that is at risk due to, you know, continuing increases in rents and other factors? I would also like to see, and it's probably hard, again, for them to go down to this fine-grained level, but when we are able to look at things in it, you know, for the city, we can potentially track what deed-restricted properties might be kind of closing in on potentially, you know, meeting their, you know, full year, or 20 years, 30 years, or whatever, and then so we can better understand again what might be falling off the books. While we need more.
Yes.
We might be losing some as well. And I think back to the regional side of things, just as they're identifying that 0% to 50% is such a high need, that they also try and develop recommendations for how to help fund those for communities, because it's all great with 60% AMI and doing My Tech and all of the sort of federal assistance, but it's just that deeper funding component for us that's really hard. I really do appreciate that they've identified the housing, the amount of people that are housing burdened, and that's just, you know, disturbing number to see that over 50% of our population is housing burdened. I'd probably say, we're probably not representative of, you know, of that 50% just here on council, but recognizing that is a big and growing issue for us. So I think that was about it, just a comment.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, and a lot of those we are currently addressing as well, such as the, you know, the amount of affordable housing that we have naturally in the city and also the ones that might, because Lytech started kind of in that period, then now so many of the ones that received the Lytech for affordability are starting to expire. So with the first refusal from 1175, we're definitely looking at those and making sure that we are ahead of it. So thank you for those comments.
A lot of money to be able to. We can't buy everything.
No.
I do love that we're putting some money with the CDPG towards those, maybe if we can look at a strategy to, if they have an action plan, to try and save some of those.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Demott?
I would agree with the point about the age of the affordable housing. I remember when I toured the Alto, first couple of years I was on council, there was a discussion as we toured it about a lot of the other Adams County housing units down there, and if at some point they were going to have to be redone. So it'd be interesting to know age and condition, and if, you know, Adams County housing really has any plans in the future for that. And then the other big concern I have really, and you kind of addressed it a little bit in your slides, in terms of what is feasible for Westminster. Back before the mayor came back in '21, and Mayor Potem Nermella and Counselor Azadi joined us, that was the reason that the comp plan, a big part of why the comp plan didn't get passed, those of us who voted against it, we were concerned. There was a lot of data from Dr. Cog that said a lot more units than, if I recall, than what is being showed in here, but the question still remains, do we actually have the resources to do it? And that was a big push to push the current comp plan. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. I know you kind of had that in there, but I just want to double down on that because that was very important at the time when we passed the comp plan, that we make sure that we balance to water. Otherwise, I'm totally supportive of it. I think it makes sense for us to participate, because like everything else, we, you know, we each affect each other when we border with our neighbors.
Thank you.
Counselor Island?
A couple of things. When this is evaluated, do you look at the vacancy rate? Because I've been watching apartments.com as the vacancy rate of apartments, and there's 4,000 within Broomfield and Westminster, just that area. So does that come into play, the vacancy rate of apartments? Maybe people don't want apartments, they want for sale properties?
In Housing Needs Assessment, yes, they do take that into consideration. This particular regional Housing Needs Assessment was done in 2023, so it might be, you know, the data is not as current, but Stephanie was like to.
I'd like to add to, it's the affordability. So some of those units aren't affordable for the folks that are.
But they're still, they're going to get more affordable when they can't rent them. That's the thing.
Yeah. So there's always a little bit of a lag, certainly, but I think that, like, the point in time is the folks who can maybe, you know, there's that affordability piece that's in there to being rent burdened. So I think what the regional and even our Housing Needs Assessment that was done prior to this one show that, that they, the price point for the market rate just isn't there. So they can't, a lot of the folks can't get into those apartments, they can't afford them. So they need to be, the price.
But the more there is, the more they will come down, because I've seen them with three months rent-free. I mean, they're after more and more incentives.
Sure.
Because, you know, they can't, they can't make it if they're not rented, the people that own them. You have to qualify for those, and you have to have two and a half times the rent income, so that may be a barrier for folks. But the market will adjust when there's too much inventory.
We don't know when that, we don't know when that market will adjust. So it's kind of a moving target that we're trying to chase with a lot of this as well.
And as Counselor Demott alluded to, I've talked to our planning department, we don't have enough water for some of these projects, or sewer, sewer pipes, sewer. So that is, it's not going to be more affordable if we have to pay more to get more water, more sewer pipes. It's making it all less affordable for everyone that lives here.
Sure, and that's why we are conducting an analysis right now to see what we can actually build. We probably, realistically, I would be surprised if we could hit that 7,300 unit count. I don't think that's realistic. What we're trying to dig into is to figure out what we can build and then base our incentives and our strategy on what we can actually do to move that needle on that affordability, to adjust those, to make that big blue number come down a little bit without impacting our resources.
So how much land do we have left? I mean, we've had so many projects lately. Do we know that?
Not off the top of my head. Again, that's why we're digging in, and so we could really come back to you with a more thorough analysis of what we can build and what we can't, what we don't think we will build, knowing that the market is always moving and there's always, you know, hopefully adjustments to the existing market rates. Hopefully those rents will come down, but it's, that's why we're digging into that, so we can come back with you with better data.
And what is this assessment costing us?
We are, currently, we're doing it in staff, in-house right now, and if we need more bandwidth, then.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll do it.
Counselor Camellia?
Following up a couple of Counselor Island's questions on that thought, so this sounds like it might be coming, but I'm wondering of the number of units that we're saying we need of the 7,300, and aligning, you know, what we just saw, the majority of those we need for incomes under, you know, that meet the AMI 50% or under, and then after that, there's only a little bit in the middle, and then a lot on the more higher income area. Of everything we've recently approved, or of everything that has been approved, you know, where, how do we align with the ask? And so I guess, you know, where are our needs the greatest moving forward? And depending on what's already been built and what is already in progress and what has already been approved?
Yes, that's part of that study.
Part of the piece that's coming, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Exactly. Happened, I just figured, okay.
Because, exactly, we don't have a lot of land, so we are definitely in the redevelopment stage, so looking at aligning what's coming next with the needs of the city.
Right. And what's our ETA-ish on that?
Probably not before the end of the year. Like I said, we're going to try to do it in-house. It's a lot of math, and it's a lot of data collecting, and we have other responsibilities as well. First quarter next year, but I'm not super competent in that, so I don't really want to commit to anything.
That's fair. Just trying to understand. Okay, thank you. And I also am grateful to just be able to take advantage of the partnership with Dr. Cog, so I appreciate that.
It's a lot of great data that we come up with.
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes. So yes, on participating, because I, it just makes sense. So the comments I have really aren't directed towards Dr. Cog. I definitely have thoughts, but I don't think any that would make sense to ask them. Something that I think that we should look at, because especially since we're talking about folks being housing burdened and the fact that we need more low-income apartments. So I actually toured some of the apartments of the residents that came and talked to us when they were asking for more inspectors. And so what I found out is, so those apartments, they're full of mold. A lot of times, they didn't even do anything about the mold, they just patched it up. So there's mold all over these buildings. And what I found out is that so many of the units are so rundown that it would cost so much money to fix them in order to rent them, that they're not, they're purposely not renting them, and they're jacking up the rent on everybody else, because they don't want to pay to refurbish those units. So that would be one way, if we could somehow have these landlords be accountable and responsible, that would open up a lot of units for people who need to be able to be in a more affordable unit, and it would lessen the rent on everybody else who's having to pay for those units that they are purposely not renting out. So that is one issue that we need to look at that might help with the problem that we're having.
And we're going to be coming back to this body later in September with some ideas and some recommendations on how we could possibly address, not just that issue, but some of the other ones that have been brought up tonight. So stay tuned, we're not quite ready for primetime. But that's a common issue with the affordable community, is that you have deferred maintenance to keep rents low, and then you don't, the deferred maintenance kind of overcomes what anybody could actually afford. And for projects that have federal money, that's where we're using the federal, the CDP. And for, for projects that have federal money, that's where we're using the federal, the CDBG funds. But we don't want to federalize, we don't want to use CDBG funds and federalize a privately owned apartment. So more coming on that, but it's, it's a common issue to keep, to keep the rents low.
And, and I am concerned hearing about how the management is taking care of these issues. I am concerned if those buildings are even habitable for humans because it sounds like there's a ton of mold. And so that is also a concern. I'm not sure if humans should be even be in those buildings. But yes, if we can keep landlords accountable, that will help with the, the units. So that was just a thought that I had.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that economic development is also partnering with the rental housing inspection team. So we're participating in the meetings that they have with residents, with landlords and see how we can leverage, you know, some of our funding to support each other and make sure we have better safety, safe units for the residents, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Sadi?
So first of all, thank you for that rental inspection. No, and thank you Counselor Hart for that question on, I think that's a really good point. My first question is related to the number of homes. So seventy-three hundred from this, what was the, our housing needs? What was the units, the gap that we?
It was around fifty-five hundred, but don't hold me to that. I'm pretty sure like for, for the extra, the deeper affordable, it was about fifty-five hundred.
For the deeper affordable or in total?
Total, sorry. The majority of that being with the deep, the deeper affordability.
So roughly, we didn't learn too much, right, from this? I, I'm a yes on this, right, to participate and it's great. But I, I also don't want us to forget that we did a very in-depth housing needs assessment just a couple of years ago that came up with a bunch of suggestions that we all kind of knew anyway from talking with residents. You know, we know we need, we need more affordable housing, we need workforce housing, we need for-sale condos and townhomes, which we're working on. And we're one of the first cities to actually start doing that, right? So we're doing a lot of things based off of that original assessment. I don't want us to lose track that, that, you know, that is still, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I see these, these two as complementing each other. We're just getting more information without limiting ourselves. Just because we could borrow their data, that doesn't mean we have to necessarily listen to everything that they're saying. It just, it gives us access to technical assistance and data that we wouldn't otherwise have, but we still have the control to develop to our needs.
And there were a couple of things in the regional housing needs assessment that were very specific with the legislation that passed about updating a housing needs assessment that would cost us money to do, that we don't necessarily have the need for. So we decided to join the regional housing needs because it didn't really cost anything and, you know, they're already using Westminster data because we're part of Dr. Cog.
And more data never hurts.
Yes.
So when did we say we were going to refresh our assessment? When was the date, I think we said a year?
So we are not necessarily refreshing the whole housing needs assessment that we currently have. What we are doing is a separate study to look at how many units can we bring based on our code and how, you know, really fine tune our strategic plan with housing. So we're not updating everything. We are more looking at it in a strategic way and we think probably the beginning of next year.
Yeah, but-
From the first, I think I, I think usually five years is a good timeframe. So we still have some time, plus we want to see what this, you know, this analysis brings forward and with a Dr. Cog. So there's a couple of layers here. Again, there's always a little bit of a moving target when you're working with the market and data, trying to, and, and developers who have their own agenda, or not agenda, their own goals of what they can do to build affordable as well. So all of that, it's five years to answer your question. And we may extend that a little bit given that we have this kind of mid-
Right.
midpoint with the regional housing needs assessment.
When did Dr. Cog say that they want to do their next version of this?
They don't have a date.
The regional?
They don't have a date yet.
So this is more of a one-time thing?
Yes, for now. I believe that they would like to continue and update because the legislation also comes with having a strategic plan in place. And Dr. Cog has really been working on trying to bring all the regional housing needs. So I believe that it's an ongoing work, but they don't have specific dates for those. The, the main date was to submit this one to DOLA on the timeline that is required to stay in compliance with the legislation, which is by December of two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, and I assume we'll be looking at any opportunities we can to leverage. So when we do our next five-year refresh, I'm sure that there's opportunities where we may not need to do particular components of our own because we can just take their data.
Yes.
Right, and, and so forth. So, yeah, great, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
I'm okay with going ahead and using Dr. Cog because they're not interfering with our local control. And just some comments, everybody better look at power. We lost two workforce deals because we have no power. So that's the first issue. We can't control that. And so you can tell us all day long, this is what we need. We don't have the power. Another issue we have is we don't have affordability in all parts of the city. We have it in a concentrated area and I think that is very unfair to that area, very unfair. If I could do a magic wand, I'd never approve another thing down there just because it, you produce another whole problem by putting it all in one area. And that's what's happened. We have two percent of our land left between water and land. We need to be careful. As Counselor Demott said, it took two years to get a comp plan that said we will not build to one ounce over what we own as water because there are no more water rights. And all you have to do is look at the Colorado River and how many times it's been over prescribed. We can't afford to do that. And if you don't have first or second water rights, you have nothing. You don't get one drop. And in all of this, the community is well aware we're having these discussions. We have not gone to the community, had a town hall, had a group meeting because they have very specific issues about this. Ones that have already been inundated with four or five huge apartment complexes and not one has ever been requested to have affordable in it. Not one apartment, let alone only ten percent, which I think is nothing. But, and then we have, in the Promenade area, the past council approved two more big complexes and they're restricted, so no other council can say no to them and nothing is affordable. I'm just saying, that's not healthy, that's not fair, that's not good. And people, we need to go to the public, hear what they say. I, I hear what they say going door to door. It's time, maybe staff hears what they have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Demott?
I just wanted to bring up one additional point, kind of hit on it. Like I have a coworker who, it's not affordable and it's in the, probably up Hundred and Fourth and federal-ish. And him and his roommates are now looking for a new place because when their lease was up, they jacked the rent up close to a thousand dollars. You know, so sometimes those buy-in things don't stick around. They, they get you in and I'm guessing they probably assume that you don't want the trouble of moving. But, you know, the, it's an interesting market with, with the housing. And I don't think vacancy always necessarily just means that because they're available. There's a lot of different reasons that they do it. And I'm sure that each of those landlords have different pro formas about how they decide they're going to do business, whether it's deferred maintenance. But, you know, obviously I've, I've heard a lot of different stories and it's not just the workforce housing, it's also the marketplace housing, the market rate housing.
Counselor Island?
Well, I've heard they know that it costs like seventeen hundred dollars to move to somewhere else. So they get you in there and then they raise your rates a bit every time, knowing that you don't want to move. So it is a concern.
Yeah, that's why, just to say for, you know, anybody listening, that we also partner with Colorado Legal Services. So if there are any residents having issues, they're welcome to contact them if they feel like there is something wrong happening.
Yes, so when I brought that up to residents, while they qualify for low-income housing, they still make too much to qualify for Colorado Legal Services. So the, in order to use them, your income has to be so ridiculously below the poverty line that a lot of people who could use them are not able to access them.
Quick question on that. And maybe Dave, you might know, who sets the bar on that? Because I mean, that's a, a group that is together with that, that we partner with. So who sets the income level for those services?
I believe Colorado Legal Services sets their eligibility criteria relative to the federal poverty level. So it's a, it's a funding matter for them because the, the funding that runs Colorado Legal Services is reserved for specific purposes. So I think it's tied to the federal poverty level.
Yes, you are correct. They are able to give some guidance, but they wouldn't be able to represent someone.
Right, right.
Below that, yes, they can at least potentially point them into some direction, but they can't represent them unfortunately, yes.
Which, I mean, so that's interesting and maybe this is, I wish we would have had that piece of information when they came before us, what was it about, maybe a year ago they were here? Because, I mean, that's one avenue. But I guess the other thing, what's the avenue for people who are in government-assisted housing? I mean, I have to imagine, you know, if it's government-assisted housing, there's got to be some other mechanisms to protect the residents if the, you know, because it's housing authority.
Yes, they can, they can, so there is a few avenues depending what the situation is and the income. But they, they can connect with Colorado Housing Connects that also serves lower-income population. They can talk to the Fair Housing Office if they believe it's like a discrimination or something like that. They can contact HUD directly if it is a multifamily that received any HUD funding for it. So it also kind of depends on what type of housing. If they are, for example, a voucher recipient, a Section Eight housing voucher recipient, they can connect directly first with the housing authority that issued that voucher to them.
That, that's good and that's all good information. I guess my question to staff, I mean, often in municipal government, we play the connector.
Yes.
Whether it's nonprofits or whether it's government entities. So I know that we connect people to legal services, but do we have this other kind of almost a matrix saying, this is the kind of housing that, is that something that you could share with council so that we?
Yeah.
We can point people to it when you have these questions?
Yeah, we have housing resources on our webpage right now.
So we have all that there?
Yes, and we also partner with PRL on, you know, the, the team of navigators. So if somebody that is about to experience homelessness or has been experiencing, then that team provides guidance for them because then there's a lot more resources they need to be connected.
Great.
Yeah.
Counselor Camelia?
Final feedback is when that comes back to us, it would be lovely if there's like a GIS map connected with that. I think that visual really helps and you might already be planning on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I love maps.
She says, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Glad you're on it and welcome Vivian, appreciate you here.
Thank you.
There's no more questions, we will, we will vacate for the next presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is a concept plan review. Swap out on staff real quick. Next up is Kaiser North Replacement Medical Office Building. Welcome. John McConnell will do a quick introduction and then turn it over to Carson.
I first have something to read.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. The next item is a concept plan review for Kaiser North Replacement Office Building. This is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn more about the proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on the city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed object, project, before, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will write a brief introduction. Then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on this proposal are gratuitous in nature, are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city councillors. John McConnell, Planning Manager here tonight with you. I'm pleased to introduce two of our newest staff members, Carson Byerhoff, a planner with the Planning Division, and Reb Batzel, another planner with the Planning Division. They'll be providing the concept plan review staff presentations for you tonight. Carson's in his second year with the division, doing incredible work as well as Reb. Reb's been with us for almost a year now. So I just wanted to introduce them and let them take it away.
Perfect, thank you and welcome.
Thanks, Sean, thank you, Mayor. All right. All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, oops, excuse me. Carson Byerhoff, planner with the Planning Division here tonight to provide the staff introduction to this concept plan review. The subject property is located within the Kaiser North subdivision and consists of two parcels. The northern parcel, legally described as Block One, Kaiser North filing one, includes the currently addressed eleven-two-four-five Huron Street Medical Office Building. The southern parcel includes the unplatted parcel on the northwest corner of one hundred and twelfth Avenue and Huron Street. Zoning and comprehensive plan designations. The subject property's northern and southern parcels are both zoned PUD. The northern parcel is designated as Neighborhood Office and the southern parcel is designated as Commercial and the twenty forty Comprehensive Plan. The proposal includes the replacement of an existing ninety-seven thousand square foot medical office building on the northern parcel with an approximately one hundred and thirty thousand square foot medical office building on the southern parcel. The development of the southern parcel proposes the undergrounding and relocation of an irrigation ditch that bisects the site. Other site considerations on both parcels include parking lot expansions. The existing medical office building is proposed to be demolished for a future parking lot once the new building is ready for occupancy. Also, the applicant is considering mobile imaging units to be screened with landscaping and material matching the primary structure as well as a future sixteen thousand square foot expansion to be re-reviewed with future phasing. This proposal should require council approval of a comprehensive plan amendment for the southern parcel to change the character area designation from Commercial to Neighborhood Office and a preliminary development plan amendment to amend the existing land use allowances with both parcels. An official development plan amendment will require administrative review and approval by city staff. The proposed concept can move forward with technical reviews for detailed analysis of city standards and guidelines. The applicant has revised this concept plan review proposal to address staff comments from the pre-application meeting. Revisions include the building placement, which is now proposed on the southeast corner to provide greater buffer from the surrounding residential community and to bring the architectural design up to the hard corner of the intersection. City staff finds that the proposed project is overparked at a hundred and fifty percent of city standards. Overparked sites can conflict with many city standards and guidelines for the site and greater community, including, but not limited to walkability, urban heat, island mitigation, urban design, and land use distribution. The proposal should consider a substantial reduction of surface parking for the existing site buildup and mitigation of adverse impacts of surface parking within their site design. Notices provided for the concept plan review tonight. The applicant has posted five signs on the property and mailed over seven hundred letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window. All required notifications took place on report August eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant chooses to advance this application, the public will have the opportunity to provide input during the review process. If the applicant chooses to advance this application, the public will have the opportunity to provide input during the review process. The first opportunity will be accommodated by a neighborhood information notice they will receive by mail between the first and second review cycles. Second and third opportunities will be at the public hearings of the Planning Commission and city council at later dates to be determined. This concludes staff introduction and overview. The applicant is ready to present their concept plan at this time, and I will turn it over to Skylar.
Welcome.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, I'm going to turn it over to Curtis Martin to say a few words.
Good evening. Thank you, council, thank you, city staff, and thank you, Mayor McNally, for having us here tonight. I'm Curtis Martin, I work for Kaiser Permanente's Facility Service Team. I'm part of the team working with city staff on the newly proposed Kaiser Permanente Westminster Medical Office rebuild. I know many of you are familiar with us. For members of the public who may not be as familiar, Kaiser Permanente is a leading nonprofit health plan in Colorado. We're also one of the state's largest healthcare providers. We're unique in that we provide both healthcare and coverage. We serve more than a half a million members in Colorado. Our mission is to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the communities we serve. Kaiser Permanente has been in Colorado since 1969. Our Westminster medical offices have been serving this community for nearly 50 years. As you know, this community has grown since we've opened here in 1976. We currently serve more than 46,000 members who consider our Westminster offices their medical home. So we're due for an upgrade. As we envision it, this facility is more than a replacement. We're proposing an innovative, forward-looking medical office that will serve generations of patients in the north metro for many years to come. This is part of a larger vision for us. We're making our biggest brick and mortar investment in Colorado in 15 years. For more of the details, I'm turning to Skylar Dennison. He's with our National Real Estate Services Team, and thank you again to council and Mayor McNally for having us tonight.
Thank you, Curtis, thank you, Carson, hello, city council, Mayor McNally. I am Skylar Dennison, I am the Director of Land Use and Entitlements, that sits under Real Estate, a small little wing, do the land use stuff. And I'm going to do a brief presentation, just kind of a quick overview. I know there's a question about parking, so I will use the last part of my time to talk about some of the drivers for that. I'm going to try to answer as many questions I can from you. I have nearly a softball team of professionals behind me, of architects, engineers, project managers. So anything I can't answer, I'm more than happy to shuffle them over to this microphone. So I'm going to go ahead and advance the slide here. So a little bit about who we are. Kaiser Permanente is an integrated healthcare delivery system. This means that we provide both care and coverage. And to our health plan, medical facilities, and physicians work together in coordinated effort. In this model, primary care, specialty care, pharmacy, lab, medical, healthcare, is all under one umbrella. So you go to your doctor's appointment, you can go to lab, you can go to blood draw, all under one roof. That's the integrated system that we bring. In addition to, Kaiser Permanente has been providing healthcare in Colorado for more than 55 years, I think quite some time. We are at half a million members and growing, and 5,600 nurses, staff, and other care providers, and 1,100 Colorado physicians. And of course, we have 22,000 affiliated physicians in the front range. And we are grateful that we can make a difference in people's lives every day, and we're honored to be recognized. We have customers across the front range, many of which are in Westminster and in the surrounding areas, including the cities of Westminster, thank you, North Glan, Adams County, and other large employers. Some of those large employers are our neighbors, so tri-state generation. So as the largest nonprofit in planning Colorado and providing the healthcare of our communities, that we serve is central to our mission. All right, let's get to the planning stuff, I have to do so. So the existing medical office is located at 11245 Huron Street at the intersection of Huron and West 112th. Kaiser intends to replace the existing 97,000 square foot facility with a new 133,000 square foot outpatient medical office building in ASC. So it's a replacement, but it's also an expansion. So we intend to file three applications that, you know, Carson's already touched on, you know, of course, the preliminary development plan, the comprehensive plan amendment, I could talk a little bit more about that, and the official development plan for Phase One. I should say that the preliminary development plan will cover Phase One and Phase Two, I will touch on that as well. Our goal is to commence construction in Q4 of 2026 with a building operational by Q3 of 2028. And we intend to file a formal application, well, granted, like a warm reception this evening. We hope to file a formal application by early next month. Little project site overview, Kaiser Permanente ownership is comprised of two parcels. So the parcel to the north where the existing medical office building sits is roughly about 8.8 acres. And the property to the south is undeveloped, and that is roughly 7.5 acres. So a total acreage of a little over 16 acres. We are adjacent to the Westminster T-Ball Complex to the west, and then the recently constructed Acadia, I think it's the West Pines Behavioral Health Hospital just to the north of us as well. The site is currently accessed by two driveways on Huron, so north of the MOB and south of the MOB as well. And of course, the south side that's undeveloped, it is, let's call it encumbered with an irrigation ditch. This is actually serviced by the Farmers High Line Canal, and the lateral is actually owned by Ranch Golf Course and Tri-State Generation. Other challenges and opportunities, I could say, are the residential to Middle East to the west, and then you have residential to the south. Of course, we'll have to relocate the irrigation ditch on site, which we propose to pipe it along the street frontages. And we're going to do all of this while trying to keep that MOB operational through construction and occupancy. A little about the land use, this is really more about the comprehensive plan designation. So earlier this year, the city updated the comprehensive plan that allowed for primary medical offices as a primary use and a neighborhood office designation. So what we'll be doing, part of our application, is converting our south, well, amending the comprehensive plan to change the south ownership from Commercial to Neighborhood Office. That would make the whole Kaiser ownership, you know, consistent across, so all of those health facility uses that are, you know, primary permitted uses, that would apply to the Kaiser ownership. So Phase One, I want to go through a lot here, so please bear with me here. So the project includes the construction of a three-story, approximately 133,000 square foot medical office replacement building and expansion. The new facility will include the following services: primary care, pediatrics, OB-GYN, ambulatory surgery. So this is surgery that you would have same day, and then you're sent home that day for recovery. Urgent care, clinical laboratory, imaging pharmacy, and support services. This would be Kaiser's first ambulatory surgery facility in north metro, and the urgent care will be the first, will be among, that's first in the area. Additionally, the project may consider a request to incorporate eight beds for care up to 72 hours under the convalescent care and community clinics licensing. This isn't, you know, fully decided yet, but this is something that we are exploring that might be part of this Phase One development. Consistent with the retail and commercial deadlines, as Carson shared, the building has been pulled towards the street frontages away from that residential edge. Originally, we had a little bit closer, this made a lot more sense, so thank you, Carson, for your feedback. Primary vehicle access is proposed from the existing driveways on Huron on the two parcels, so those driveways will remain. The site will be improved with a patient drop-off and additional surface parking. There is a swale on the west property line, it's hard to see in this image, but that it runs north to south, along the west property line, next to residential properties, that ties into the existing basin to the north. That basin will be resized to address stormwater appropriately. The project team, we actually see this is probably our greatest opportunity here to kind of activate the site. You have that residential component, can we add like a pedestrian path, is there some community amenities? This is something that we're looking, you know, fairly hard about, so we look forward to that conversation. A new driveway is proposed on West 112th Avenue, right at the corner of the west property line, that would be the southwest corner. The new driveway will primarily serve as access for service vehicles and employees. No other modifications to ingress and egress are proposed. The service yard is located on the west side of the proposed facility, it will be accessed by that new driveway. As Carson shared, we are proposing some mobile imaging units that will serve off of that service yard, what we call a tech dock. So these vehicles can kind of plug in, so if we have extra need for MRI, or we need to change an MRI for a PET scan, or we have that flexibility. This actually is, gives us more flexibility in our, for our imaging. We will screen that from the street, we're looking at landscaping and some materials that are compatible and consistent with the proposed building. And at the end of all that construction, the existing medical office building will be demolished and improved with some surface parking, as you see there. My next slide here. Build-out phase, we are looking at the future roughly of about, adding about 16,000 square feet of expansion. This is nothing that's in our capital plan at this time, this is really a placeholder. We feel on our projections that we will see a demand, but we don't have that slated in our 10-year capital plan. But we look at our 10-year capital plan, I think every three years, we take a hard look at it. So as far as uses are concerned, and the PDP, bless you, we'll stay consistent with what's in the healthcare facilities, but it could be that convalescent care, there could be a 72-hour license up, we could be exploring, we just don't know yet. It's really going to be depending on demand when that does occur. And then finally, here we are. This is really our concept design, what we're looking at here. This is from Huron, so you're on Huron, you're looking, this would be to the southwest. What we have is what we hope to be will be a certified LEED Gold outpatient medical office facility. What we are proposing are metal panels with extensive glass curtain wall, provide a contemporary look while promoting transparency and openness. So we know that's important to really activate that edge along the street. We also include a super graphic, so if you see in that image the purple with some trees, what we incorporate is perforated steel, and we can insert designs in that. A facility that's currently being constructed in Lakewood, I think we have maroon bells is integrated in that, it's illuminated at night. I'm from Southern California, we have a facility where we have California poppies, one of our favorites. And then, of course, our wayfinding signage is integrated into the design as well. And I see some landscaping there, and based on what we heard earlier today, I think milkweed would be appropriate to kind of, for the butterfly population, so we will explore that as well. I'm going to stop here, I've talked too much, I want to provide enough time that you can all ask us questions, but I do want to circle back on the parking. So what we are proposing is a ratio of 4.5 spaces per thousand square feet. Now, this does exceed the city's minimum parking requirement of 3.5 spaces per thousand. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is for our facilities, for outpatient medical office facilities. This facility is very similar to a number of other facilities, really the modalities that are included. And we have done parking demand studies, and we know that our effective parking rate is actually 4.35 per thousand. We increased that a little bit because, one, we have an urgent care. Unfortunately, people arrive to an urgent care sometimes under duress. The last thing you want them is circling a parking lot, they want to be able to find that spot so you can get them aside as quickly as possible. Another thing is, some type of uses just have more visitors. Let's think about pediatrics. For all of us that have kids, you know, you might remember the time where you had a doctor's appointment, mom might take the little ones to the doctor's appointment, and father might meet mom there. And then, if it was my house, my mother-in-law would show up as well, so you have three cars in the parking lot. And that's just kind of what happens with certain types of uses. So that is what's really driving that additional parking. I know there's concern about heat item effect, we are exploring solar, so there might be an opportunity for those solar arrays over parkings that could deal with that issue, landscaping. So we look forward to a conversation, but we are preparing a parking demand study as part of our PDP application. So there'll be some stronger justification, just besides me talking here at the microphone. I will stop now, thank you.
Questions? Councilor Camelia?
Well, I heard LEED Gold, that's incredible, so that's really exciting that you're already aiming for that. I was going to bring up solar, it sounds like you're already trying to do what you can to consider that into the plans and integration, so that's good to hear. And then, like you just mentioned, if we can really take a look at the landscaping and figure out what all surfaces can be permeable instead of asphalt wherever possible, I think will do a great deal of good, as well as a few trees wherever possible over the parking structures, because I know I circle around until I find a tree, so that would be extremely helpful. And I will say, I am really grateful to hear that Kaiser is continuing to invest in our community. I'll say the only thing that I miss about working at Jefferson County was the fact that I had Kaiser for healthcare. So I miss going there, you really are the best, and it is more than healthcare, it's a community. And I appreciate that, and I understand that, and I'm really excited that you're going to stay and expand, that's fantastic. I'm hoping that there might be additional jobs that come with this, do you know if this will expand the need of?
Because it is a replacement, and just with kind of technology and, you know, adjacencies you have inside the facility, if there is an FTE increase, it will be nominal, unfortunately, but we can provide more data when our application is formed up.
Understood. Well, overall, I'm glad that you're doing this project, so thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilor Ireland?
Well, I like the look of it. I used to go to Kaiser back in the day when my husband had it as a choice at work. Existing building, remind me how tall that is right now?
How tall? I think in the PDP, the ODP, I think it's 37, but it could be wrong.
Three stories, too.
Three stories.
So it's replacing, three stories.
Three stories or three stories.
Okay, I'm fine with it, I just haven't heard from the neighbors how they feel, so.
We'll let you know.
That's a consideration, always.
Appreciate it, and I think pulling the building closer to the street away from that residential edge will be a big factor in that.
Okay, as a Kaiser member, I will first say that for 17 years, 14 here at this facility that you're replacing, so I'm thrilled. You're replacing it, I'm thrilled, I think you're adding more service here because I just had a few months ago to drive with a concussion down to Lakewood to be served. So would that be something that you're adding up here to serve the northern area? Because I feel like.
Do you want to speak on that, Curtis, a little bit about that?
Yes, we're opening an urgent care, and Lakewood is the closest urgent care facility here in the metro, for the north metro part of the city, so that will be a new service, as well as the Ambulatory Surgery Center, which will open with four to six ORs, we're still looking into that right now. It will be for outpatient surgeries, as Skylar mentioned, it would be completed on the same day, and you would be released on the same day.
Great, because I work up north, and we also have Kaiser for my organization, and a lot of the people who live up there don't have good access to the care that Kaiser should be providing in that northern area. So I'm glad that we would be home to an expanded service for that. As a planner now, I'm going to slash council comment. I do, I do like what, oh, by the way, hello to your dad, Bob. Carson is Bob Byerhoff. The, one, I appreciate what staff is, in terms of guidance, with kind of moving and situating the building and the comments that you're hopefully continuing to listen to. I am a little concerned about the amount of parking, I was a little gobsmacked when I went to that next slide, my stars. So it's helpful to understand where you are with the current parking. I mean, what is the existing parking ratio there? Because I see it used, but not to the extent that it's not serving.
I don't know offhand, but I would say that the parking there is probably close to the 4.5 to about 4.7 parking ratio.
Okay, well, it'd be interesting, perhaps, when you get your analysis to be able to, if you're not increasing FTE, and, you know, what is the, what are the additional visitors that you anticipate being able to?
Really going to be driven by the modalities that are being proposed. We're going to see a lot more turnover in this new facility, and that's why we're taking. We're going to see a lot more turnover in this new facility, and that's why we're taking a harder look at that parking. I mean, I appreciate the challenges. I mean, unfortunately, with this type of use, you have two populations that you're dealing with, you have staff, but you also have, you know, members. Members just don't use public transportation to get to the doctor's appointment. We've tried, they don't. Otherwise, where the only time we see it really effective with staff is really where it's really where you have light rail, where you're adjacent to light rail is where we have more success with our staff actually using, you know, public transportation, other modes of transportation. So it is a bit of a struggle. Not to say that we're not going to continue to try, because, you know, maintaining parking spaces, it's expensive. So it's a struggle for us as well.
Okay. Something to think about, we do have wagon road, park and ride, and a ton of buses that are up there, so if there are any ways to facilitate people using that, or shuttling, or doing something. So with respect to the parking, I did like Councilor Carmelia's idea of having more permeable paving area if you're going to have that much parking. So I don't know, again, if we allow that or not, but that might be a good way to address, because I know those solar panel parking carports are pretty expensive, so I bet they would be value engineered right out of your project, after you proposed it. And then, I guess, the only other thing is, it's just, for the neighborhood office, is retail a secondary use in there? So we couldn't get retail anywhere on there?
Thank you, Perdón, for your question. So for neighborhood office, the retail can be a certain amount of the ground floor area, I believe is how it's calculated for a building, but it can't be its own standalone use, if that makes sense, but it can be a part of an existing structure and use.
I appreciate we think that. Okay, it would be, yeah, this area doesn't have a ton of retail to serve office users, so sad to see that go away a little bit, but I don't know. If there's some way to, even if you got, you know, if you're going to have mobile MRIs, maybe you have some mobile food.
We do have a pharmacy that is open to the public, so there is a retail component to that. I don't know if it's a small cafe or a medicine shop as well, so that is a whole thing as well. So there will be a retail component integrated into this medical office.
Okay. Okay, that's not bad. Yeah, I think that was it. Hopefully, we'll improve that corner, because that corner is a little sad-looking, so hopefully it actually improves that whole area. And again, that building is old, and...
It is old.
Looking forward to seeing, I love it's LEED Gold, and so please maintain that. Thanks.
Councilor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. So I'm actually an EMT, and I'll tell you, you know, there's a big push in healthcare towards outpatient care, and which redistributes the risk, but ambulance, ambulatory surgeries is such a huge need, as you guys know. You know, it shifts the volume away from the ERs and inpatient beds that a lot of capacity... So when I treat a patient and I'm transporting them to various hospitals, what I'm seeing more and more are a lack of capacity, right? They're either overloaded, they don't have enough beds, et cetera. And a lot of these patients were going to a level-one trauma, or a level, you know, they may have minor needs that ambulatory surgeries is really made for. So thank you for adding that piece, and for parking, amen. You know, I'm usually, I'm for less parking in residential areas. The one use where I see a need for more parking is related to medical centers, because if an ambulance is coming in, it's usually three or four family members, you know, it's going to be a lot more than you see today. So I think you have the right vision, but to Mayor Perdón's point, I don't know what the existing capacity is now. There may be a balancing act, but I do know you'll get a lot more people coming in, so balance all of that as you need. So thank you for the presentation, and thanks for doing this.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Oh, I don't have any comments. Thank you for your presentation. Councilor Dama?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
I go by there often, and I hope, my husband, he never watches this, so I can say, on my way to my sewing store, I see you, and I can't think of a better piece to go on that property. Across the street, you've got a huge new complex that went in for apartments, and on the other side, you have sort of everything, dentist to insurance to whatever, on that corner, then the gas station. So I've always questioned the retail right there, because, number one, it's hard, it would be hard to get in and out, especially if you're on, because I'm always going east on 112, and I couldn't get over there. I have to go then to Huron and figure my way. But for neighbors, I'm not concerned about them. I think they would love this better than anything else you could propose. I truly, I've walked that neighborhood lots of times, they're great people. I bet they'll be thrilled, and especially if you're thinking of some walk paths or whatnot they can use. And as far as parking, I'm a cancer patient, and I've been to many hospitals. There is never a hospital that has enough parking. And here, you don't have any choices of where you park, and you do not want to be going into that neighborhood to park. So you do need those, because you can't park on Huron, you can't park on 112. You are contained, and I believe you need every parking spot you're talking about. I believe in those, the units that go back and forth, in one of my oncology areas that I've been, whether it's the PET scan, MRI, CT, those trailers would come in, and it was there on a given day, and you do it there. So it helps you be more mobile with where you can treat, and you can treat more all over. So I think it's a great plan, beautiful plan. Sorry to say that I access a hospital too much, but I know from going downtown so much, and they have huge parking garages. They've built two or three other parking garages, and people still have to park on the streets there. It's, and I don't know how the ambulances even get between where there's two cars parked, and you're trying to make a turn, and somebody still is in traffic over here.
It's impossible.
I'm grateful not to be a driver, let alone the trucks that have to get in to unload at the hospital. So I think you have really thought this through. I love the garden out there, and the butterfly pavilion. I'm sure we'd be happy to give you some ideas of what would be great there for pollination. And I applaud you.
Thank you so much.
Please make a nice ambulance bay. Lots of room. That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you so much for these comments. This was a great opportunity.
As stated at the outset of the concept plan review, councilor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, or planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Thanks for coming.
Can we get five?
Sure. Five minutes.
I'm going to lay a little more sleep.
I know.[1124.83]
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we are back for another concept plan review, Dogtopia. Land use addition in Brent Cross Shops subdivision. Welcome. And this is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn more about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the application on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction, and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions, and the applicant provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature, are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and the city council. My name is Rob Bates. I'm a planner at my community services department. I'm here to provide the staff intro to this concept plan review. This subject property is located within the Brent Cross Shops subdivision at 7719 West 92nd Avenue. The subject property is owned...
Hello. Should I start over? Okay. The subject property is owned PD and designated as commercial in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This proposal includes the request to add two land uses to the PDP, including outdoor animal daycare and kennel for the existing Dogtopia business. The existing Dogtopia business received approval for a special use permit in 2021 for the outdoor animal daycare and kennel uses. According to Section 1148-J of the Westminster Municipal Code, "Special use permits shall not be transferred to another person, business, or location." So if the ownership of the business changes, the special use permit would be void. So the property owner has requested to formally add these uses to the PDP. So the uses run with the land instead of the individual property owner or business owner. For the applicant to pursue adding a land use to the PDP, they would need to process a preliminary development plan amendment. The proposed uses are compatible with the commercial land use identified in the Comprehensive Plan. They are compatible with the existing development and the general site design. Two signs were posted on the property, and over 1,000 notice letters were mailed. A notice was also posted in the Westminster window, and all of the required notifications took place on or before August 8, 2025. If the applicant chooses to advance this application, the public will have opportunity to provide input during the review process. The first opportunity will be accommodated by the neighborhood info notice they will receive by mail between the first and second technical review cycles. The second and third opportunities will be at the public hearings of the planning commission and city council at later dates that will be determined. This concludes my staff introduction and overview, and the applicant has a concept plan to present at this time.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors. On behalf of Dogtopia, thank you for allowing a little bit of time. And unlike my prior presenters, I do not have a softball team behind me, so I will answer those questions for you. I love that. I thought that was awesome. Okay, I'm going to make this quick and simple for you because we just do not have a very big ask here at the end of the day. So just a bit about Dogtopia. Anybody here familiar with Dogtopia? Excellent. Hopefully you had a great experience. So it's more than just a daycare for dogs. This is all about dogs and having the best day ever. And so we provide daycare, overnight stays, boarding, and spa services at this location, at all Dogtopias, actually. We are trusted dog wellness experts. We are the largest franchisee, Dogtopia is, of dog daycares in the country, just recently overtook Camp Palwell. Our core differences, really, I'm just going to highlight just a few of these, but we're purposeful foundation. We have three areas where we provide service animals to veterinary or to vets, to kids with autism, and then as well as individual folks that need dogs. We provide support for those, and we raise funds for those. Our wellness proposition is not about bringing your dogs to daycare. This genuinely is about bringing your dogs in for socialization, activity. We have just rolled out a brand-new Fitbit for dogs. It's called the Dash. And we have found out that dogs in daycare, when they're out, we have open play from 7:00 to 7:00, and they run eight miles a day with us. It's an enormous amount. It's well over 90,000 steps for dogs while they're in there. So the socialization and the activity is very, it actually prolongs the dog's life by two years. Studies have proven. We, all of our products that we use in the stores are enzymatic, meaning you could drink them without any problems. They're only activated based on when we apply them to either urine or dog poop. So everything is very well thought out, including the air conditioning system. And I'm going to use this term because it's very expensive, and I'll just say this. We have a Ferrari sitting on that roof, genuinely. It's a cost of a Ferrari because what happens is it recirculates the air every 15 minutes out of the room, so it does not smell like dogs, and it gets rid of all of that smell. We do not want our dogs in swallower, and we don't want our team members in swallower it either, so we spend the money really to advance that. Just to give you a good idea of Dogtopia in general, this is kind of just some of the marketing staff, but it's over 700 or 75-plus team members that are supported, and it's in Phoenix where they're based. Traditional ecosystem as it relates to team members. There are 365 for four stores sold. There are over, well, 400 open by the end of this year. And so we have 5 million dog experiences as of 2023 coming through all of those. Store openings in '23 was 45, and so Dogtopia themselves owns six stores, so they have some skin in the game to be able to prove out some of the things that they're doing. So for, just to give you an idea of Dogtopia and entrepreneurial best franchises and reviews, and this pet care category number one franchiser, so really know what we're doing here. At all of our daycares, there's supervised socialization, increased exercises, I had mentioned, a consistent education, top-tier safety standards. One thing I did gloss over is we have a true, you all probably heard of Caesar, and he's the dog whisperer, if you will. We have a certified one of seven dog whispers on our team. Her name is Lorraine Rhodes, and she is a doctorate in this, and so she is a safety expert for us, and so she brings back these, brings through all of these safety things, including PACFA, which is based here, obviously you all know, which is a governing board for that, and they are amazing at what they do, and they really help us push to keep a level playing field, to keep the dogs healthy and safe. And so she partners with them as well to help keep our dogs safe. By doing that, one of the things we do is we have certified canine coaches. They have to go through a 90-day evaluation. They have certified coach one, two, and three. And so they go through a process every 30 days to get approved for this, and by the 90th day, they can pretty much take care of the whole, the room themselves. We have an evaluation process. Every dog comes in. We do not have breed restrictions because we're very good at what we do. We can identify the dogs that are struggling, whether they've had a social situation that keeps them from being, you know, a good, healthy pack member. Dogs are pack animals, and so these are all things you have to consider when you're bringing dogs into a daycare. We have rubberized flooring. We do not have concrete on any one of our floors. It's rubberized. We have individual walls. We have three rooms in each, in our locations, and it's based on size and temperament. So anything under 25 pounds is a toy box dog. Anything over that is, we have two categories. One is the romper, so it's the teenage dogs that have all that energy, high energy, and the other is the gym, so it's kind of the older dogs that want to play but don't have quite that energy. And so we identify the dogs as to where they're going to come in. So it gives you an idea. We also have webcams at our stores, at all of our stores in each room, so you, as pet parents, can walk, check on your dog while they're out and play. Just the Westminster store by the numbers, that store's been open for three and a half, well, we've owned it for three and a half years. We have 30 team members. Our tax base is probably, it will be around $800,000 at the end of this year. We are Top Dog certified. That means that only 20% of entire, of all those 365 stores are Top Dog certified, meaning we had to go through an extensive training. Dogtopia had to come out and approve that. And so there's, can't imagine what the hoops you have to jump through to do this, but it's important to us because safety is absolutely paramount to us. Our GM has been with us since '22. We have four-point stars on our Google reviews. We're in good standing for the last three and a half years with the state. Our net promoter score is at 92, 300 active pet parents. Our ownership group offers, operates seven Dogtopias. We have this one here. We have Lakewood and Wheat Ridge as well in Colorado, and then we have four in San Antonio. And we have a license for 15 total, and that's bringing four more into the Denver area that we will bring into '26, '27. And so what we're asking for is obviously the land use for the PDP. And the big portion of this is obviously going through this process is pretty extensive. And so if we decided that we wanted to sell these as a package, that we could do that unencumbered, which is a big element of this for us and one of the reasons we're in front of you. We do not have plans to sell, but if it does represent itself, this has taken quite a long time and a considerable investment to see if we can get, can't get this approved. So webcams, you can see, by the way, the average time that people look on their webcam is just a little over two hours. So they, they definitely watch their dogs while they're there, and we get phone calls from time to time for pet parents that, "Why isn't Sparky out playing today?" Dogs have bad days, too. We're dealing with three-year-olds at the end of the day, mentality of three-year-olds. So these are our causes, service dogs for veterans, therapy dogs for students, and adults with autism, and we raised all of the money with that. To date, we've raised over 200, or we've been able to train over 200 dogs. And Canines for Warriors is our number-one veterinarian service dogs that we provided. And I'm happy to say that Gretchen Evans, if you all know who Gretchen Evans is, she won the Pat Tillman Award in 2023. She is our spokesperson, and she is fantastic. She's an incredible lady. And so kind of a little bit more on that. 3 million raised. There you have it. What kind of questions can I answer for you?
Councilor Ireland?
How many dogs do you house at one time? Or with your expansion, how many will you be able to keep there?
So right now, we can have up to 110 dogs based on the space that we currently have, but we're not going to expand that. Currently, we have about 90 dogs that show up to our facility twice a week. The rest of the time, it's in the 70s, so we're not near capacity. We're probably about 85% all in.
Councilor Carmelia?
I don't see any issues with approving this, but I guess I have a question that I'm assuming cannot be done, or must be a reason from staff, but couldn't the agreement go with the business instead of the land or the owner?
Well, the SUP...
Yeah, the special use permit is specific in that it was approved for that specific business owner, and so the new business owner would have to reapply for their own special use permit. So adding it to the PDP as a land use really makes it run with the land instead of that individual business owner. If a business owner were to sell, they would, they would want to disclose that that new owner would have to apply for the special use permit themselves, which of course is not a guaranteed approval. It'd be dependent on planning commission.
Right. I guess I'm just wondering if a different business ended up purchasing one day, you know, what, what then?
Like a different business with the same use?
Right. A different, entirely different business, different use. Because it makes sense if you have the same business with a different owner, but I'm just curious, like, if this, this is with the land permanently?
Yeah, so if another business with the same land use came in, it would already be approved and on the PDP, so that would just be allowed there. If it was a use that wasn't already established as approved on that PDP, they would therefore want to go through the same exact process to add the land use to the PDP, or it would have to already be on there. It would already have to have been approved on the PDP.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for all the good that you're doing for the community as well. I appreciate it.
And if I could add on to that, we do have a first right of refusal. We do have a first right of refusal for that location, but it is my understanding, and I could be wrong, according to Dave Gurman, it does take about eight months to get an SUP approved. So as a new business owner coming in, trying to, to go into this space, the current owner of Carlo would have to approve on contingent whether or not you could get the appropriate governmental approvals to put your business into that space. So he would have to wait eight months before he could rent that space out to make sure that, that would be approved via the SUP. This, by having a land use, he would be able to, or I would be able to say, "We don't do dog train, we don't have retail," so he could have somebody come in, like a Cosmos, which is in Wheat Ridge, which is an amazing store. They could come in immediately, and they could open their business just based on the build-out. So it would be much easier for Carlo to be able to rent that space out, and that business owner to be able to come in really quickly and turn that profit and, and put tax dollars into the community pretty quickly with FTEs.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor Pro Tem?
And Councilor Carmelia, I don't know if you were asking, like, if a different use could come into that building, and it would be whatever is in the PDP...
Right.
Is listed as a land use. So it could be like a restaurant could come in there if, you know, if they found the dog kennel kind of situation would be appropriate. But so I think in general, I mean, it's been operating there. It's in an area that's not really, overly impacted by any exterior noise impacts. So I think it's fine to me to have that be a permanent allowance in the PDP.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Hart?
Yeah, to me, it just makes sense. I think your ask just makes sense, and so I'm, I definitely agree with it.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Scotty?
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor... Come on?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, you don't have a ton of residents around there, anything that are bugged by the barking and, and whatnot, and I think you should open the cameras so other people could just watch.
If it could be therapeutic, I'd try to work that out.
Good news service.
Hate to watch dogs.
It's like those cat videos you see. I'm sorry.
But yeah, I'm okay with, with what's being proposed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. As stated at the outset of this concept plan review, councillor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or oblige the applicant, city staff, or planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Thank you for being here. You all be well. Do we have reason for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, procedurally, the city council study session, once it's concluded, there is a proposed WIDA study session for tonight. So if the council business is concluded...
We are at 9:14.
And if, as Chair of WIDA, you were willing to convene a WIDA study session, there is a proposed study, session, exec session to obtain direction from WIDA regarding a proposed development agreement and to discuss the possible sale of WIDA-owned property located on Block D5 in downtown Westminster to Gray Star Corporation pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code Sections 111, 3C, 2, 4, and 7, as well as Colorado Revised Statute 2464A and E1.
As everybody's filing in, if everybody would go around the table and state that you're willing to go into executive session, you hope things confidential.
Ovi Zada, yes?
Amber Hart, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Derek Knaa, yes.
Karen Armala, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Thank you. And if the public portion of tonight's WIDA study session has concluded, then we could ask the clerk to discontinue the webcast and then begin a separate recording for the executive session.